6:30 PM, we will call the Monday, October 9th, 2023 to the Mayor's City Council Meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No additions tonight, Mayor.
During none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Ely.
Second.
And a second from McNeely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. Motion carries three zero. Then we'll move to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. Motion carries three zero. That will take us to our first business item. Uh, we have Darren Schuler here, who's the Superintendent of the Watertown Mayor School District. And I'll let you take it over to you.
I would like to welcome Darren Schuler here to give an update on the state of the schools for Watertown Mayor.
Wonderful.
Thank you, City Administrator Johnson. Uh, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for giving me the opportunity tonight to give our annual State of the Schools address. Um, again, this is an update on, on just how we're doing at Watertown Mayor Public Schools. And again, I appreciate giving me a few minutes of your meeting this more, uh, this evening. First of all, last couple of years, when I've been here at your meeting, we've talked a lot about construction. And, uh, this will be a little different focus this year and the fact that construction's coming pretty much to a, to a close. Uh, I'll show you one item here in just a little bit that we're still working towards. Um, uh, first slide, Nick. Uh, our focus this year really has been our strategic plan. And last fall, um, we started with a roadmap, um, in gathering input from all of our stakeholders, parents, families, staff, uh, community members. Um, as you can kind of see, the, the process that we took there and, and got a number of really good input sessions, um, to gather feedback on where they want to see the district, uh, in the next five years. And again, uh, most school districts, uh, much like ours, have a five-year strategic plan. Um, ours is the same. That's why we call it the 2028 strategic plan. That's when it will expire, um, in that, in that school year. So, um, the only date that probably isn't correct on there, it took a little longer to, to actually get it to a board approval, but I think we did that in April, uh, the final approval. And, uh, again, we really appreciate all the input that was put into this plan. Um, next slide. Um, so our vision, um, pretty much stayed the same. And I think through some of our surveys, um, creating environments where all students feel connected and experience opportunities to grow and thrive, um, is truly where we're at. And, and that connectivity and the opportunities is what we really feel like we strive in, in Watertown Mayor. Uh, for a smaller school, we feel like we can give kids so many opportunities to participate, whatever their interest is, and we're proud of that. Um, and again, that connectivity that between our students and our staff and our families, um, is huge as well. Uh, next slide. Um, so here you can see, and I just handed out a, um, one for your, your own eyes, um, is our strategic plan for 2028. Um, and again, the way we broke this down is we, um, had a number of strategic commitments on the left side and on the right side, ways that we're going to achieve those commitments. So you can see on the first, um, slide there, um, learner outcomes and we will ensure systems and supports are in place to address the social, emotional, mental health and academic needs of all of our students. So again, kind of encompassing the whole student, if you will. Um, financial stewardship, um, we will be responsibly managing our resources to support district facilities and financial stability, uh, sustainability, excuse me. Um, again, making sure that we have a really, um, robust, uh, fund balance, unassigned fund balance, um, and making sure, making those, um, fiscally smart decisions, um, again, with students being our focus. Um, profile of a graduate, um, again, one of the items I handed out to you tonight is our revised profile of a graduate. Um, we took some time last year through this process is to revise that profile. And again, those are the attributes, um, that we build into our curriculum that we want all of our students to have when they leave Watertown Mayor Public Schools and ensure that post-secondary success. Um, partnerships, again, we'll connect offerings to meet the needs of our students in our community. That's kind of our community ed-focused, um, goal or commitment. Again, trying to thrive those opportunities, um, for our students in our community. And then again, all means all. This is really important piece of all of our staff and our families said, this means a lot to us. This was in our previous plan, but again, providing a safe, welcome and inclusive school for all of our learners. And that was really, um, loud and clear and through some of our surveys and our input sessions. Um, people, this is a newer one for us as well as we're trying to build a culture where students and family and staff and community engagement, um, is a satisfaction and it's a priority piece. We want everybody to feel like, um, Watertown Mayor Public Schools is a place where they want to go. And so we're doing some surveys and I'll show you some data here in just a few minutes, um, what we found. And then lastly, again, communication, and, and you know, certainly from a council standpoint, um, communication, you can never do enough, um, but again, getting ahead of that and making sure we're being transparent with all of our stakeholders. Uh, again, on the left side, the benchmarks and the areas that we're trying to achieve are the ways that we're going to, uh, measure ourselves. And that was one of the things the board, uh, Hunter Feltes here, our board chair tonight, thank you for coming, Hunter. Uh, but one of the things the board said is that we need ways to measure our new strategic plan. Our previous plan, uh, while it was very effective, uh, there was no way to measure it. So you'll see on the next page, um, some ways and we'll start to measure that. So if you want to click to the next one. Oh, one more slide before we get there. Um, go ahead. Um, one of the things we've learned a lot, um, through our surveying and our input discussions is, you know, what is our why? Well, obviously it's the students and we really feel like building those meaningful relations is, is what we do. Um, also came in, coming through through those input sessions was making sure that every student has a trusted adult during their school experience. Um, again, that all means all. And then telling our story, our Watertown Mayor Royal story, um, being out there and telling people in, in our community about the great things that we're doing each and every day. And then lastly, making those connections in our communities of Watertown and Mayor and, and our other areas that surround our district. Here's one specifically towards, towards Mayor, um, you might appreciate this. Um, each, uh, fall in, in, in August, we have our new teacher workshop. Um, one of the things that we do is we take them on a tour. We tour Watertown and we tour the city of Mayor. And we get out and have an opportunity to see those communities and we end up here in Mayor and we have lunch. And, um, one of our council members, uh, Ms. McNeely and her family, uh, has always been so kind, I think the last three or four years to donate that lunch at Agave. Um, it's the highlight, I think, for our staff, our new teachers. I think they kind of think that's the standard, you know, that we do lunch, uh, uh, but again, it's, it's really been a welcome piece and it gives them an opportunity to see, uh, Mayor and, and, and the community. And then lastly, um, the picture on the right, um, last year I did coffee with the superintendent, uh, was an opportunity for community members to come and have a conversation, um, with me and ask any questions about the district. Uh, one of those was held here at the community center. The other one was at your new fire department, which is beautiful. Um, and there's Hunter and, uh, I think chief, have you still chief? Matt Schultz is still chief. Uh, he was very kind to open it up for us that day and, uh, give us the opportunity to, to, uh, to talk. So again, and gave us a tour of the, the new facility. So those are some of the connections, uh, that we're making. Uh, next slide, um, again, going back to our strategic plan, um, like I said earlier, the ways that we're measuring that, uh, we have something called a vision card. They only put half of it on here, maybe even a quarter, just so you get a taste of what it looks like. So on the left, you can see that direction that I mentioned earlier. Uh, the second column in is the measurement. So what tool or what way are we going to measure how we're doing? And then lastly, there's a description in the middle of, of what that's going to look like as far as the student experience and the teacher experience. And then lastly, the levels in which we fall. So, um, this spring, we got some really good survey data from our parents, um, from our staff and also our students. And we began, we began to start to implement, um, where we were on our vision card. And this will be our next, next four to five years of where we're at and we can, and track our growth. This will also be on our website for parents to come and take a look, community members as well. But it does measure each of those strategic directions, um, that I mentioned earlier. Um, so some of the survey data, we, again, surveyed parents, staff and students. And some of the great data that we received, we'll brag a little bit here, but, but 96% of our parents agreed or strongly agreed that their students' learning is a high priority at Watertown Mayor Schools. Uh, again, 96% of parents strongly agree or agree that their school, school staff is generally respective, respectful and positive. And then 95% of students, uh, students, parents agree and strongly agree that their child has a strong connection with at least one adult in the school. So again, uh, some, some are really positive data. Uh, next, staff survey, uh, 92% of our staff members agree or strongly agree that they would recommend, uh, to a parent that they select Watertown Mayor School District for their child. 96% of our staff members agree or strongly agree that, um, that staff members are generally concerned about student welfare. And then 97% of staff members agree or strongly agree that they are making a positive impact in their role as a teacher or a staff member. And that includes custodians, paraprofessionals, um, cooks. They were all included in that survey, so. And then lastly, uh, the student survey, some really neat data that came out of that survey was 96% of our students agree or strongly agree that they have at least one staff member or classmate that cares about them and wants them to succeed. Uh, 96% of students agree or strongly agree that their teachers believe that they're capable of learning and providing, um, them with challenging learning opportunities. And then again, my favorite, 93% of students agree or strongly agree, um, that they're proud to be a Royal. So that was very neat to see as well. Um, lastly, here is the, uh, profile of a graduate that we also talked about earlier. Um, we did a little bit of revision when we came out of, um, COVID and we learned a lot about student mental health. Um, we added an extra section, uh, two sections, actually. Uh, the healthy individual, which is on the bottom right, uh, we really felt like when students leave Watertown Mayor Public Schools, we want them to be healthy individuals. That means healthy physically and certainly mental health as well. And then lastly, the engaged community member, and this one came up as an interesting topic and certainly from a council perspective, um, I think one of the things that we see, you know, with folks my age, um, less and less community involvement, whether it be the Lions Club or, um, you know, even the council member, um, but just less of that happening with kids leaving. And some of the surveys that we have done with some of our students that have left our schools, that is an area that we feel like we really need to do a better job of. So we're going to be working towards that end of trying to get kids more engaged as they leave our high school, um, in the community and hopefully that'll carry on to wherever they go in their future endeavors. Um, but self-motivated learner, creative and critical thinker, uh, skilled communicator and effective collaborator are, are, um, other profiles. And again, our use for this is, this is in every classroom, including preschool. And our goal there is for every teacher, when you're planning your lesson, to be able to look at that and say, how, what can I incorporate, um, one or more of these, um, profiles within my lessons? So again, uh, just another way to build a, a great student, uh, leaving Watertown Mayor Schools. Slide. Uh, lastly, construction, one of the things that is currently, um, under construction is a greenhouse. Uh, there's a little bit of a misconception here. This is not our greenhouse. Uh, this is what it's going to look like when it's done. Uh, we have the foundation poured. Um, it is ready to be constructed. Matter of fact, today we were hoping to see our contractor arrive, didn't happen. Um, but the construction should happen here in October, uh, with the idea of opening it up probably, um, in December for our, uh, second semester courses. Our goal there, um, is to, our FFA program is to, to grow plants and do some horticulture work, um, and eventually have plant sales probably around Mother's Day, um, as a fundraiser for the FFA program. Uh, we had a significant, um, donation from our FFA alumni group, uh, to the tune of about $260,000, um, to help, uh, at least about half the cost of the greenhouse and a shed. I didn't put a, um, picture of the shed. One of the things about greenhouses is you need storage. And so, uh, you don't want to use the good, uh, storage that might be in there because it's all obviously built for plant growth. Um, so we've built another shed, um, pole barn, if you will, um, to store all of our equipment for that. But, um, again, we'd love to have you come for a tour when that's wrapped up and, and see the, and see the amazing technology as well as student-run, um, projects. So again, that's going to be run through our FFA program. And we also see, uh, some of our sciences as well using this, um, as we get it, uh, into completion.
What size is it going to be?
That's a great question. Uh, 30 by, Hunter, you gonna help me here? Yeah, I want to say 30 by 60. That might be a little short even, but. It's directly on, it's on the backside of our building, so it would be on the, uh, the north side of our CTE labs. So our, um, basically they open up a garage door from the, um, FFA room and you can head right across the parking lot to it. Um, also our CTF, our, our, our welding and our woods area also is adjoining. So, um, it's in a really nice spot, pretty well protected as well. Um, and again, we're hoping to have it running, students, um, planting flowers in the winter time. It can be used all winter long, obviously. Um, and we kind of modeled Howard Lake Waverleys. They have a really robust program over there and also do a plant sale in the spring. Um, so we're, we're hoping to kind of follow their model. Um, but these new models have some amazing technology. Well, it self-waters. So you don't have to come in on a Saturday to water. It literally programs off your phone and you, the water will, will come at the needed amount. So, um, it's going to be a pretty neat technology. Um, so that's the main construction piece right now. Everything else is, is pretty much wrapped up at this point. Um, from our bond project, our 2019 bond project. So, um, yeah, that's, um, any questions, uh, that I can answer or thoughts or comments?
I, Nick, you got any questions?
As I said, I'm trying to get Nick to offer a tour. We're still working on that. But I'd also, you know, and love to have the council come at any point in time if you want to of our facilities and, and get a, a little sense of, uh, of what we've, what we've done over the last couple of years in terms of our construction work and, um, and where we're going. So again, anytime, look on that.
During your new teacher orientation, when you stop off at Mayor, I'd be more than happy to help with the tour end of it.
Absolutely. We have a pretty good tour guide already.
You're already doing it?
So if you're looking to.
I wouldn't want to drag down the quality.
Yeah, yeah, let's just leave it as is.
You're more than welcome, Doug.
Ms. McNeely jumps on the school bus with us and she takes us on the tour and gives us the highlights and then, yeah, get to eat. So it's good. So thank you again for your support.
Yeah, a lot of work you guys have done, a great roadmap. Um, you know, future looks bright. So thanks to everyone who's involved, all the stakeholders, the board members. Um, great job, great vision.
We appreciate working with you and, uh, thanks again.
Yep. Great, thank you. Thanks for coming in, guys. All right. With that then, Nick, we can move to the, uh, wastewater treatment facility project, final design scope and engineering fees.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've received the, uh, cost quote to, for the final design scope and engineering fee regarded with the wastewater treatment facility project. Um, as was, uh, earlier this year when, um, I'm blanking on his name. The main engineer, the gentleman that came in and gave the presentation. Chris Watson, thank you. He came in, gave a, gave a very broad presentation about what we're looking at doing. And, uh, we've, staff, uh, have been meeting on and off with the engineer since then to kind of dial things in on some of the questions we had out there. So I will then turn it over to Dave to present.
Yeah, uh, so if you recall, we, we, uh, so we planned, uh, last part, we said, we're very engineering, working with Kyle on various, uh, elements of improvements that are needed at the wastewater plant. And essentially those improvements revolve around the new phosphorus limit that the plant is going to have in term. And so with that, uh, yeah, we've increased the, uh, removal of that plant, which increases more bio solids, uh, that we're taking out of the wastewater. And so phase one really revolves around this increase and, and with bio solids out of this, uh, treatment plant. So, uh, we've gone through, looked at the different elements of it, bio stop salt storage, there's irrigation and mixing. Uh, we have a sludge loadout building that needs to be constructed associated with this, uh, pumps, process, uh, process piping, conveying systems. Uh, there's clarifier improvements, uh, that are in part, uh, part of this project. And then also electrical and skate improvements, uh, that come along with this. Uh, we're replacing the UV, uh, disinfecting system. And then there's also an existing bio set, uh, self-storage, uh, facility out there, a building that will be demolished as part of this. In total, it's a, uh, project that is in the, in range of a 8.8 to 11.9 million dollars. So it's a significant undertaking to make these improvements. Now with that, we've, uh, applied for some, uh, point source implementation grant funding, uh, associated with that phosphorus limit that's been applied. Uh, so we're, we've applied for that grant funding and we are waiting to see where we end up on the priority list associated with that funding, but we're anticipating, Nick, we'll have more detailed funding of this, but, uh, that this would be a combination, oh, I'm sorry.
That this would be a combination of some grant money and then some low-interest loans that ultimately would be, uh, provided to fund this project. So with that, uh, we're at the stage where, uh, we are looking for authorization to continue with the design process. And we've provided you a, um, a fee estimate or a scope of services and fee estimate. And so if you look through that, uh, you can see that, uh, there's a significant amount of work associated with this to put these elements together. Uh, we've estimated about 5,000, uh, hours of staff time to complete the work and, uh, 20 different, uh, professionals, uh, involved in this, uh, design effort. Um, we've provided a schedule in here, uh, for completing this, which would be, uh, if you move forward tonight, initiating the design here in October, uh, submitting plans and specs to the MPCA in March. And then, uh, looking to get approval next July, uh, and then bidding and award of the project somewhere in the August, November, 2024 timeframe, and then construction, uh, starting in January, 2025. So it's, it's a long process to move through this. Um, as you'll note in the, uh, schedule that's been given to you, you know, at the actual project, uh, award and constructions depending on, uh, the funding, uh, associated with the project, uh, to move forward with that. Uh, what we've, uh, put together for you here is a, uh, not to exceed fee, uh, to, uh, fix not to exceed fee of $841,525. Um, again, uh, tried to note the, the effort as far as, uh, the associated staff time and, and the, uh, depth of, um, expertise that's required to do this work. And, uh, with that, I'll, uh, ask if Nick wants to add anything. Otherwise, uh, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Don't have much to add other than Kyle and I and Jennifer and Adam. I've been meeting and talking about, uh, different sculpts where it would be placed, uh, round versus rectangular types of containment areas, all of that different, even types of systems within the interior. And, um, whether it's bubbler or jet or some other system and comparing costs of operational costs versus upfront costs and trying to see what's going to make the most sense for that. So, uh, there have been, has been behind-the-scenes work going in on this that gets us to this point where we can now nail down some plans and specifications. And as far as the funding piece, I'll, when we go to the workshop on the utility rate study, I'll touch on that a little bit too.
And your fee, Dave, for Bolton, Nick, there is starting, that, that fee is going forward, correct?
Yes.
Anything back?
Correct.
We've already, we already approved, I don't even remember what the amount was for just us to get to this point.
Correct.
And then, um, on the table, the 8.1 where it says 20% engineering, legal, administrative costs is like 1.7. Is that part of this?
Yes. So that's intended to kind of capture all.
Yeah, because you just did a 20% and that can be adjusted.
Yeah, it, it not meant to be a quote, more to estimate the cost so that you have a total understanding of, of the project cost. Um, as you can see, the, the, this phase of the fee fits within that, uh, $1.7 million that's been estimated there. Um, this would get us through bidding and then at that point, uh, when you're looking to move forward with the project, we provide you a, uh, a fee estimate proposal for construction phase services. Exactly.
Um, okay. And so you're going to talk about, so is this, you, we pay as we go? Or like, it's like a one lump?
No, so the way we propose it is we would bill you on a monthly basis, uh, as we're working through the design.
Based on actual hours?
Yes.
That's just, okay.
So the short answer is the city's sewer fund has about 2.2, 2.3 million dollars in it. And, uh, the bulk of that, save for reserving half a million for keeping just a general, uh, fund balance, the rest of that is anticipated to go towards this project.
Right. And so that could be, that's what we're, can be used to pay for.
Yes, we would draw off that.
Draw off that amount. So we'd be, we'd pay this by, what was the date that you have?
So.
This would start, this would be paid between now and November 2024?
Yes, and the, the bulk, the bulk of it kind of between here and, and March, when we would be getting the plans and specifications put together to submit to MPCW, or M, uh, the MPCA.
Okay. And, and you said March? I'm just, I just like to make notes of.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Yeah, and I've, obviously not to take.
I really hope we get a grant.
Of, of, you know, this kind of a project.
And we don't have a choice, like we have to do this.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we've been, uh.
I mean.
I think we, we've been fortunate. I think we've, we've, we've gotten good life out of those initial improvements that were made. Uh, and, and I think more life than we initially anticipated, uh, just based on the growth of the community and the way it's played out. But yes, and again, you can kind of see that, that, you know, before this is completed, we're still into November 2026. So it's a, it's a significant, uh, project and, and a significant timeframe to get it all done.
And I do know that, um, Kyle has worked really hard to utilize the, especially the biohazard store like that, whatever that building is, that really wasn't used for, is supposed to be used for that, but we're using it for.
There's been some kind of conversions and, uh, yeah, repurposing some things out there to again, extend the life of it. Um, you know, this is kind of the framework now for the next phase of growth and, and new permitting requirements. And then there'd be a future phase that would kind of go along with more growth in the community as, as needs arise, just to handle more flow. You'd still have, uh, potential upgrades that you have to keep up on in the future just to handle the growth. But this, uh, this, uh, gets us to a place where we're meeting the permit requirements and, and establishes, uh, the, the next, uh, the initial wave of growth that we have between now and, you know, the next several years.
Sorry, I have one more question. Okay. Um, I know we're talking about the rate study that you did. Is this incorporated in that?
Yes.
Information?
Yes, it is.
But we otherwise are in a healthy position with wastewater, correct?
Correct.
Going into this project? And we've been kind of preparing for it.
Yes, so the wastewater treatment facility, it's hitting that 20-year mark. And some of the electrical components, the PLCs, we can't get replacement parts for. They just don't exist because they've been outmoded that far. Uh, they want, uh, backup clarifiers as part of the new permitting process. We have one, but they want to see redundancy in the system. Um, our sludge, our, the bio solid storage, we've been band-aiding that and making it work. We know we're under capacity, but the guys make it work. This would make sure it's plenty of capacity for the next few decades, at least, with the size of that building. So very much preparing for the future, updating things that need to get updated. The UV system, we're impressed it's lasted, lasted as long as it has. We're probably a few years over, probably the normal life of a system like that, but it continues to work. I, all good things, of course, but a lot of these components are getting to that point where upgrades need to happen. And attacking it like this, like with the point source implementation grant point of it, we applied for $7 million. we applied for $7 million of grant money as part of these upgrades. So that's also why you attack it one go like this is you have a major project that you can hopefully get quite a bit of grant money for to pay for the bulk of the cost.
And the city has been planning for this going back a few years. If you recall, we, we had, we prepared a CIP for both the water plant and the wastewater plant. And that, the purpose of that was to try to anticipate some of these bigger things that were going to happen down the road so that as you were doing your budgeting and, and planning for the future, that this didn't catch you completely off guard.
Sure, we'll get into this later, but when does that grant? When do we find out about that once we get past this?
Trying to remember what Jennifer said.
It's coming up here soon when they put out the list. I was going to see if we have it.
We've already applied?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't remember what we've applied for my.
So we have applied, we're waiting for the state to come back and put out the list, the priority listing of who's going to get funding and who has to wait another year?
So then let's say worst case scenario, we don't get on that list. Do you reapply the next year or does it push the project out? Or do we just, you just keep moving forward and then if you get the grant, it can go backwards? Or is it only for future?
Yeah, we would, we would continue to pursue the funding until we got it. And we would delay the project potentially if, if we didn't find it.
Okay. Is it all or nothing, kind of like the splash bag when we did the DNR, like for the grant? Like you asked for the 7 million?
Yeah, you can ask for, what was it, up to 80% of the eligible project costs? Not everything is eligible, but about $7 million worth is eligible.
Got it.
So we asked for the maximum amount. Yep.
And that's one reason why we started this process a lot earlier so that we could be prepared to submit for.
Right, you know, it was starting with that facility plan, now the preliminary engineering to be able to kind of fine tune the, the needed improvements, the costs that's associated with that. But yes, we were, it was back in March when we submitted that facility plan and, and we've already applied for that grant funding. So again, it's, it's all been laid out with kind of anticipating this drawn out timeframe to get this done.
And we'll go over this, where this is coming from in our work session.
Yep. And as far as the improvements and, you know, Nick, Nick touched on them too, but we'll be happy to have Jennifer come out too and give a little bit more of a technical presentation of, of what's, what's going to happen out there or, you know, meet out at the site, kind of walk it. Kyle, I'm sure would be happy to kind of show you kind of some of the challenges he's already having with the current facility and, and the improvements that are being proposed to make.
Yeah, I was there last summer and we walked through some of those. So I did, I got to see firsthand kind of what they were doing. And so I definitely see a need for this. But thankful that we've been able to make it this far without having to.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the wastewater treatment facility project final design scope and engineering fee as presented.
Motion?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for you and your entire team for all the work they've done. Great job. All right, 12 to consider adoption ordinance 240 regulating cannabis use in public spaces.
Thank you, Mayor. Based upon conversations at the last council meeting, we wanted to update the definition of public place. So I have, based upon what we had before, went ahead and updated that. So public place now means all city-owned buildings, parks, streets, sidewalks, alleys and trails. So those areas were added in where they will be prohibited.
Any questions on that?
No.
I'll look for motion to approve ordinance 240 regulating cannabis use in public places.
I'll make that motion.
Second, question, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries three zero. Consider adoption resolution submitting a grant application to Carver County.
So this resolution should look really familiar. So at the last council meeting when Nick Lacheck was here discussing, was it two meetings ago? Like, anyway, when he was here, one of the times discussing funding for the structural integrity report, he had talked about the CCD, the Carver County Community Development Agency Community Growth Partnership Initiative. And a couple of years ago, the city applied for this on behalf of Brad Quas for the old fire hall renovation. So doing the exact same thing, I have the grant application prepared. He's got about 19,000 worth in expenditures throughout various phases now. And if it comes back positive regarding the condition of it, it would then work towards those future ones as well if they're available. So the grant would give up to about $7,500 worth on a one-to-one match. So we have that match in there. Like I mentioned, that the rest of the grant prepared. So this resolution just authorizes submission on, on Nick's behalf. The monies flow through the city. It's a reimbursement style program. So let's say Nick doesn't pay his bill on the study and just walks out and says, I'm not paying a darn thing. Since it's a reimbursement style, paid invoices have to be submitted before the Carver County CDA will issue money. So we're not caught on the hook with anything and nobody's left out. So payment has to be made first before he can get reimbursement on it.
So he submits, he does work and what qualifies for that, he submits. And then we, the city or the CDA give?
So the, so what will happen is he goes through the study. He pays the 19,000 or whatever it is. Once he has proof that he has paid that, he gives that to me. I look through and says, yep, this satisfies the requirements of the CDA. I turn that over to the CDA. The CDA says, yep, this, this works. He's paid the bill. They cut a check to the city for $7,500. The city then cuts the check to Nick Lacheck for the 7,500. So it's an in and out.
Okay.
Because the funds don't flow to the particular person. Similarly, for the 90,000 we got for Brad Quas, he has to do work. It has to be paid for. We get those receipts and then we get the money and then we turn around and give it to Brad Quas.
Okay.
All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash 32.
Motion?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion on this?
So with this then, this is just for the, the report part of it. And was there a separate grant if he, if he can bring it to the integrity of the building up?
So yes, the other part of this Carver County CDA grant is for the development portion. So this is the pre-development grant. And then the monies this year are going towards Brad Quas's project. But next year, when it opens back up, we could certainly reapply for the old Creamery project and it could be eligible. It is competitive, so there's no guarantee, but certainly is possible.
Good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries three zero. Consider approval recommendation, recommended open gym hours by the Park and Rec Commission for the Community Center.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Park and Recreation Commission has been working for a while now on what would it look like to have open gym? We don't quite have the rules and regulations in place yet, but we do have our October newsletter coming up. And we would like to get just the general hours we're looking at out into the public to start priming them for what open gym may be. So the park board has put work into, and city staff as well, I must say. We've put work into it to try to, we're trying to marry existing uses along with the open dates and times that we have. And we feel we've come to this schedule that should work well. It's split into two different seasons. One is the school season and the other is summer hours. During the school season, we have a, well, during the entire year, we have the card players in the Monday, Monday, card players in the morning, Monday through Thursday, and they're, they are there from eight to 10. And then in the evenings during the school year, we have Watertown Mayor Sports that take up, well, along with pickleball, that'll be coming, that'll be Monday through Thursday type of deal in the evening, six to eight PM roughly. So that's why you're seeing the gap there in the Thursday and why it ends at 1:30. And then part of the Thursday ending at, oh, I'm sorry, Monday through Wednesday at five. But it ends at Thursday at 1:30 because we have the homeschool group that was allowed use of the community center to bring in their homeschool children of the mayor area to use it from two to four PM. So we've got that block in there as well. Friday, we have the whole thing open from 6 AM to 8 PM. We don't have a ton of rentals on Friday when we really looked at things. Because we're wondering, because obviously Saturday and Sunday are reserved for rentals. That's where we make a lot of our money. And anytime, let's say we had a rental on Tuesday, we got it well in advance, we would cancel open gym to make sure we could get the rental in there.
And how are you communicating this to people?
We're going to be setting up a calendar on the city's website that people can access and look up when those updates happen. And then we'll push it out on our social media on the electronic sign. And if anybody has any other great ways to shove it out, we'd be more than happy.
People can bring their own like basketballs.
Yep.
Because I, I could see this being very exciting for my son.
We encourage people to bring their own equipment to use. We have a small selection that we have, but it is a, some basketballs, some other balls that they can use. But it, it's not, we're not looking to sink a ton of money into this. Try to keep it free and open for everybody. So if we can encourage people to bring their own stuff, that's for the best. For the summer hours, it flips. So on the summer hours end of things, you get 10:30 AM to 8 PM because you don't have the things going on in the evening with the Watertown Mayor that you would during the school season. So the schedule opens up a bit more and then on, so you can go to 8 PM with a lot of that. Now, during those times, you're going to have firearm safety courses and some other things that pop up during the week. And we would just make sure we get that information out well in advance so people know. We're not going to have cross conflicts on that. So to start out, that's where we're at, rules and regulations to follow here shortly. But want to make sure we get something approved as far as the hour so we can get it out into the public.
I think it's great to use this space.
It's underutilized.
Oh yeah, just quick touch, looking at having it unattended, we do have four security cameras in City Hall that cover all the angles, not just here, but then in the.
And there would be signage to just say that.
Yep, but a big signage so people can say, here are the rules. If, we'll keep the kitchen closed off as best we can. Make sure we have signs that says, please do not use the kitchen, that's not part of this. But then if we have any incidents or people bring things up that they notice because we're going to encourage self policing, if you see something, please tell us because it's unattended. We can certainly access the camera system to get an idea of what went on and follow up with people to see if corrections need to be made.
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion to approve the open gym hours that the Park and Rec has proposed for the community center.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries three zero. That will take us to city council reports. Councilmember Ely, anything to report on?
Nothing.
Councilmember McNeely.
Nothing.
And I did have a public works meeting. We covered majority of the meeting through Dave and, and the wastewater treatment plan. We did meet to talk about our towing policy for snow and then discussed maybe changing our hours of snow and when you can park, which we've discussed what we want to implement this season. We just don't have enough time for training or education part of it. But come next summer, we're going to just take another look at it. And if we maybe keep it the same or maybe look at no parking at night from certain hours or maybe change in the one inch to two inch, whatever, but we're looking at that. But no changes will be coming this winter on the parking. And that's all I have, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. We are adjourned.
Go right into workshop. The only two, anybody want to take a quick break? Head right into it. All right, so two items we've got for the workshop is taking a look at the budget once again. But now that general fund is kind of in a good spot, we're going to focus a time on the utility funds to just talk about those a little bit. Utility funds should go a lot faster than the general fund. It's more focused areas, so it's really easier to get a handle on rather than the multitude of departments we have in the general fund and the CIPs that all affect those as well. And then the second part will be taking a look at the preliminary utility rate study that we've put together. So going over the 2024 budget on the utility end of things, we'll go water, sewer and then storm sewer. Adding a new line item in here, penalties and interest was not being budgeted for, even though we do have revenue as part of that. So we're adding this budget item for penalties and interest on that.
And that's, sorry.
Late fees. Late fees on utility bills. That one is.
That's a lot, that's like average?
That's pretty normal. Yep. That's what we've seen historically. It don't, like it, there just wasn't.
Where did it go before?
Great question.
Okay.
I'm just making sure we're counting the beans.
I like the beans are being accounted for. That makes me.
So it's not that no fees or no late fees were collected in previous years. It's just a budget number wasn't in there for it.
It just fell into a different probably bucket when it was collected. This is the budget, so that's different than what actually.
Yeah, so it was being accounted for.
It was accounted for, but you weren't putting it in our budget when we were looking and we need that for.
Right, yep, you're.
Understanding, okay.
Right on the money. We were collecting late fees as all cities do with utilities. It just, we didn't have a budget number on here for it. So it was counted as revenue. It just didn't show up in the budget anywhere.
And that's just very interesting to pull out and see what that number is.
That's a very common number to have in there. Anyway, I'm.
Sorry.
Not pointing fingers or anything. I'm just, it's a new number you're seeing here and just a little back history on that. Interest earnings, this represents the return on investment with our investments for the water fund. So the monies that we don't utilize throughout the year, we put in usually six month CDs, year-long CDs, things of that nature. And then that's the interest we get off of it. Tower antenna rent, that has been removed because we currently have no lessies on the tower. Hopefully we'll get another telecommunications company up there so they can put some equipment up there and we can rent it out once again. It's a very popular thing to do. And this is actually the first time in my career I haven't had something on a water tower. So interesting place to be in.
I wonder if we're, if that's just a normal thing with the new types of towers, they don't need as many? Or is that something that we can advertise to say that we have space?
I'm working on that to see what does cities do. And I've asked other cities and they generally say, we've never had that problem. Usually they come to us to want to put stuff on top of it. So kind of in a weird place right now. We'll find something. We can't go long without, while we.
Well, did the previous one, did they, did they lease it from us then?
Yeah, so.
It was up and they just didn't renew them?
Yeah, they just didn't renew it. They decommissioned the site. So generally what happens, you'll get a telecommunications company that says, hey, I want to put antenna up on the tower because it's cheaper than building their own tower. So they will rent that space from us. We'll have an agreement in place, a contract that spells all that out. The engineers will be involved because they are wanting to put equipment on the top of our water tower. So we have to make sure that it's done to proper specifications and design standards so it's not damaging our facility. And then in the case where we had the decommissioning here that happened, the engineers have been involved throughout that whole process and they make sure that it's removed properly and they don't leave scarring or paint chips or any other damage to it and it's done well. So that's the process you go through getting one up on there. And you negotiate rent and how much you're going to get and go from there. So hopefully here, I'm not going to count chickens before they hatch. But if we get one that comes in 2024 and we start receiving rent on it, hey, great. That's icing on the cake, but I don't want to bet on money that's not going to be there necessarily. So for water use charges, historically, so if you take a look at these previous years here and it's like, boy, that went down quite a bit. here and it's like, boy, that went down quite a bit. So the answer to this is the actual revenues never hit that number. Actual revenues were always a bit, quite a bit less than that number that was budgeted for when I was pulling up the notes. So it was around 500,000 when I did the budget in 2023. Tracking the numbers more now since I have some more time to do it, sliding it at more of 494, and this could be for a variety of reasons. If it's a drier year, people may water their lawn more or less, or they're trying to cut back and conserve more because the cost of everything is going up, so they're trying to save money here and there.
So because I don't remember when we did the 2022 budget, you're more of like just a flat number and that was more of like, is it just because we just went off like, I think we just did like a percentage difference from year to year?
So.
I, you know what I'm saying, like, why is this one?
Very specific.
Five thirty, yeah, with 15 cents. Like, to me, that looks like that was, ended up being actual, but it's really not, it's just how we.
You know, percentage.
Percentage?
But we didn't look at, and you're looking at more of a actual.
Yes.
We're doing budgeting different than we have in previous years, not that one is right or wrong.
It's a different methodology.
It's just a different methodology, okay.
I do zero-based budgeting, which means I wipe this number to zero and then I go look at the data we have, not just for this year, but previous years, to get an idea of where that ought to be. And generally speaking, my revenues, I go on the low side and my expenditures are slightly on the high side, so.
I know you've went through this, but sometimes I need a refresher.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Those 494, if I were trying to hit it right on the head based on today's data, this would probably be closer to that 498. But given I still have a couple months left of data I want to see, 494 is where it calculates out to right now, so. So I was a little on the short side on that. Water connect reconnect fee, this is the figures that when new houses get built and they connect on the sack and whack charges, things like that. This hasn't come close in previous years, and I made this comment last year when we had a month and a half to put together 2023, so I ratcheted this down, ratcheting it down even more as interest rates go up. Housing construction is probably going to slow down even more, so I'm not going to overshoot this by too much. Again, you know, if we get 2025 next year, hey, great, that's extra on there.
But we don't have like a gazillion open spots anyway to build homes.
We have some, but the Coldwater eighth is now open up.
Right.
Yeah, that's in that one area.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, is townhomes now there? I think most of those spots are now.
Sunset is pretty well filled.
So I'm just saying, like, it's not, it's just, we don't have even a lot of open building sites. Like, if you go to Waconia, I mean, they've got like six different neighborhoods going in with lots of, you know, so they have a lot more opportunity to have. I mean, the nice thing is I, I think we've got like five right now on that eighth edition that are, like, even foundations poured.
Mm-hmm.
How much is that, 15,000? How many homes does that represent?
Couldn't tell you that much. I just look at the numbers based upon where we're at, what's coming this year, what we got in last year, to just kind of get that idea. I couldn't tell you how many homes that represents.
Roughly.
Five grand, right?
Whack and sack, whack is 9,800. Sack is the same, so looking at 17. Yeah.
And if we get above that, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, who knows what's going to happen? Because the houses that are, foundations that are built right now, that would be in 2023, correct? Or do they not connect to water until they're?
Well, they pay the whack and sack when they apply for the permit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's when a lot sold in their building.
Right, because like there's five houses. I, I'm just trying to understand, like, where the fee, what year it falls in. So if we had five building permits for new houses.
It would fall in the year that they pulled the permit.
Which would be before construction. Okay. But who knows what 2024 is going to be? We have open lots, but.
And similar with the water charge for 22 budget, we did not come close to 174,000. Wasn't even close.
It's like, what were we, yeah, okay.
So I'm trying to.
And I'm fine with your number, I just was trying to understand it, that's.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a huge swing. Water meter repair, this is when they get meters replaced, new meters go in. Again, downward trend similar to these numbers with construction, just making sure that's more in line. Another revenue that wasn't being accounted for that we're getting money for was the state connection fee. That's kind of an in and out type of thing because we pay that to the state, but it wasn't being accounted for in the budget end of things on accounting it was, so adding that number back in. So you can see a total, you know, half of that was just not having somebody on the tower antenna on that front. So overall drop in revenues about 62,000 roughly. And again, as we continue through November, October, November, as we get more revenue data, we'll dial this thing a whole lot closer. So that's it on the revenue side for the expense side. We update the numbers for the debt service, so that's pre-planned in numbers for the water treatment facility. Chemicals and chemical products going up a thousand dollars, just costs have gone up, so we're trying to make sure we have enough in there for that. Telephone, this has been moved to, this has been moved down to water system itself where we already have telephone listed here. So we're just moving that in right in there, it just makes sense to have it all in one place. Electric utilities, that has for 20, we just hadn't been, like, we had 30 grand in there, just wasn't spending that much. So we ratchet it down, 22 should handle it just fine, otherwise a lot of that stays the same on the budget, should be fine to handle it. The state connection fee, it got moved down to another line item just because we weren't accounting for it in this line item slot. It was getting accounted for in a different place, so we're just making sure the budget reflects where it gets accounted for. For the tower itself, no real changes from the 2023 budget and for 2022 for that matter, so that should hold well. Well, number two, we haven't had, this line item hasn't been used in years for professional services, so dropping that off. Repairs and maintenance should hold good at 2,000 there. But for the system, so this department represents the rest of the system itself, adjusting, this is where the wages and salaries and personnel type of things come out, so adjusting for all of that as we had done in the general fund. Slight reduction in the cost of sampling, 1,000 was a little, you know, 650 was too low, 1,000 was a little high, so bringing it back down to 750 on here. Same with fire hydrant supplies, 4,500 was way too high, 1,500, kept it a little high, but even in, now that we have a couple years worth to look at, 1,000 should do it just fine. Professional services, there was just not as much that we needed in there and it was being accounted for in other places. Auditing accounting services, this one and the sewer fund, they take a chunk of the annual audit and pay for it, helps offset the cost. Engineering fees for the water, a lot of, the 2022, 2023 held the same. A lot of this was due to the 2020 improvements that were done, engineers, so this can be dropped down quite a bit because we just don't have a lot of engineering we need on the water side. So that gets dropped down. Software support, this is where some of the professional services got moved up into here, so we're adjusting for that. ACH processing fees, those will stay the same. Postage, got a little bit more expensive, so we account for that, and it was a little under with these figures, so this brings it more in line to what we've been seeing. Gopher State Locates, got down a little bit. Insurance, this reflects our property casualty and workman's compensation insurances that we have, so adjusting to make sure those are in line. Repairs and maintenance have been pretty good. Miscellaneous general, this is where the 7,000 got moved down to. So you're seeing that 7,000 move down to miscellaneous, goes up by six because we didn't quite need all seven as part of the miscellaneous type of stuff. So it's really a net 1,000 down on that. Using subscriptions and then water meter, similar to above where we saw water meter repairs had dipped down, this also dips down as well to reflect that. So that is the water budget. Similar kind of story when we switch the sewer end of things, we see general property taxes, this will be the last year that we use property taxes as part of supporting the sewer fund. Again, adjusting for penalty.
Even though we're doing this big project, we have still been able, will be able to not use a levy to support our sewer.
The huge asterisk in that is the $7 million of grant funding.
Okay.
That is the giant elephant in the room.
Okay, so if that doesn't go through, then we might have to.
Well, we push back the project.
Okay. But this was our main goal, actually for several years, years, well, more than several, was to be self-sufficient on the sewer.
Mm-hmm. And that's taken into account where we're moving with this as well as the utility rates that, that he takes that, takes that to heart. Penalties and interest, a lot of the things you saw on water, so I'm going to go a bit shorter on the sewer end, adjusting here for the sewer use charge, it just wasn't getting that much, this is far more realistic. Again, another line item we were receiving money for but just weren't having it on the budget. And then there's that sewer reconnect, this is just the sewer equivalent of the water sack and whack fee on that end, so adjusting to be more in line there.
So why would they match? Are they the same on each one?
Which one?
On those two from the sack and whack, you have 20,000, but then you only have 11,000 or on the, on the previous one?
15.
Oh, 15.
Yeah, 20 there?
Yeah.
So, so I pull up the accounting software and I look at what each year has accounted for in there, and then I say, okay, what is that? And so for water, it was around 15, and for sewer was closer to 20.
I just thought they were the same, I thought it was the same amount for each one, I just thought they'd match, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I'll drill down to that some more to get you some better answers.
No, don't new homes have to have two water meters? No? So I would think water would be higher than sewer.
You would think, but that's not what the accounting figures show.
Interesting. But we've had a couple down years of new houses.
Yeah, I'll drill down more.
Just look into that. It just seems to me they should match if they're getting charged sack and whack for every new home.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you won't leave one of them out, so.
Yeah, that makes sense, I'm just going by what the.
Right, right.
So I'll, I'll definitely drill into that more. So on to the expenditure side of things, debt service you have, this will be the last year of debt service for this issuance, the 2017 A. Again, with the telephone, this got moved down to the main area. Otherwise, electric utilities was on the low side, so this was, it was under, a little under budget here, but it brought the number back over, and yeah, definitely under by about 1,250, so this should be good for going into next year. Chemicals, chemical products came in pretty well, 25 will handle it by the looks of it, BioSal's disposal, we can inch that down because we're dumping about twice a year now, and that's only about 28,000 or so, so I've got 30 in there just in case. The price creeps up a little bit. Professional services, this was in the 22, 22 budget, but we haven't had professional services for years as part of this, so there's no, and this was, I think, this is where we had the interim class A license, what was his name?
Oh, yeah, the contract.
The contract.
Yeah, Cluver, yeah.
That's where this was coming out of.
And we just never.
It just never got removed. Yep, so we've adjusted for that. A little slight, because we got telephone coming down in here, so slight tick up there. Electric utilities, this wasn't cutting it at all. This was under, even for 22 was under, 23 wasn't quite even close, so 42 will cover for the electrical utilities, so adjusting for that. Gas utilities was about where it needed to be, so we know, no big changes there. Testing and lab services, those costs have gone up. 19 is where it was, 21 was close, I undershot it a little bit on the 23 budget, so 19 is about where it ought to be. Repairs, this was good. This year for repairs on the, no, it was on the water end, that got blown out a bit, but that's where we had the water main break. That's a fluke thing that affects budgets, but that's why we have reserves. And then capital outlay going down just because we don't have, you have near as much capital outlay we're doing in these years, and even for these years, it wasn't nearly these figures for capital outlay. So we're bringing that down because we don't have as much planned. This is a sewer similar to the water end, we have the personnel figures lined up in here, so that's been adjusted. A lot of these figures have been pretty good. Engineering fees for this, my note is it's going to be significantly more than $15,000 with the wastewater treatment facility, but I don't want to just blow, let's have one mega number for a once in a 30-year project. So it'll hit, it's fine, we're just going to leave it as is and just know that a big number's coming.
Like 800,000?
Because we, it's going to come out of reserves no matter what, we're not going to adjust.
Right, but we're.
Compensate for us.
Right, got it.
Type of thing, so it's like, there's no.
We've already saved for this.
Yeah. There's no point blowing this number out in one year just to have, to come right back down in 25. I just kind of that. Kidnapped.
I mean, that's fine because we already have it in reserve.
Yep. A lot of the other stuff came in pretty well, telephone, again, this, bringing that up, this is, we've got a little extra cost. We had to change out this year, had to go from 3G to a 4G unit at one of the lift stations as well as adding the public works for Scott, add a little bit of extra cost on that. Plus, we're aligning some of the SCADA stuff, so it adds a little bit of extra cost. Postage, again, like with water, adjusting that up. Gopher State Locates get cut down because we just don't have nearly as many. Insurance getting adjusted for property casualty and workman's comp. And then this is dropping down once again, just not as much repairs and maintenance as there was in the past, this was way too high. And sewer jetting, it's about 25,000 that we do each year of the 35, so that leaves 10,000 repairs and equipment for that, but should be enough based on the figures. Dues and subscriptions, this bumped up, it just hadn't kept up with where it ought to have been, so this gets it there. And then inflow and infiltration, this was, this was talking about slip lining some of our existing utilities, so this has been building up in reserves for the last two, three years, Kyle has been telling me, so that he could do a slip lining. So slip lining is if, if the pipes that we have on the ground are good, there's not a lot of breaks or sags or that, what you do is you basically put a lining on the interior of it, that, so you're not doing a full reconstruct because they're still decent, you're adding lining on the interior so you can give them longer life, so we can drop that out. So really, your difference here is about the 100 grand in property taxes that's coming out from that to that. So that is the sewer fund. For storm sewer, this is even easier, not a whole lot changes. Interest earnings aligning with that, storm sewer rates stay the same. Penalties, late fees get adjusted for actual, and that's it for that. And then on the engineering side of things, prepping for engineering costs, they, so 2023 is the first time we have the budget, 15, as we're now getting through more of the credits that are going in there, there's more engineered work that goes as part of that with Coalhog, so we're bumping that up to get into actuals. Other than that, we have an extra, extra 20 in here for sonaring all the ponds that we had talked about so we can build profiles about how we're going to dredge and what priority order, and that is the storm sewer end of things. Any questions on those updates? Again, I'll email this out tomorrow so you can look at the spreadsheet if you have questions. There's a very brief budget for EDA, but that's just for EDA. Not, not much to that one. So with that, we'll start in on the utility rate study. So with this, we have two main components, one is the reconciliation of our own budgets and how those rates play out, but then two is kind of you look at a comparison of where you're at with other cities. Where you're at with other cities is very subjective, I'll say. We all have utilities, but if, you know, somebody did a $30 million infrastructure project a couple years ago, well, their rates are going to probably be through the roof because they have to pay for that, whereas if you have a community that the debt has fallen off and things are in good repair and they don't have major project, well, they're then in their nice sweet spot where they don't have a ton of debt service, so that can bring down that as well. But it'll just helps give a snapshot of where things are at. So with the utility rate study, what we look at is our operations, it's revenues, it's expenses, it's debt service and how that'll. So with the utility rate study, what we look at is our operations, it's revenues, it's expenses, it's debt service and how that all plays together as well as we talked about with the water wastewater treatment facility. What does that look like? How does that play into it? So quick look snapshots at the water fund for our debt service. 2026 is one of the, the last major payments from the, one of the previous Department of Health loans that we have out. That falls off and we don't have any major projects for the water fund coming up in the distant future. Things are running with the 2020 project took care of a lot of that. Nothing that we're going to need to really bond for heavily. So we have, can have this really nice drop off here. And on the sewer fund, we have the drop off of existing debt. And then what I've done here is normally this would drop off entirely and go to zero because we have no debt. However, we're looking at this project and I've placed a 125,000 as a placeholder number. And we'll refine this as things move forward. But 125,000 is about what the sewer fund can handle without, with keeping rates where they're at without the general fund pitching in on it. So that's our debt limit that we can replace and ladder with. And so 125 a year represents about $2 million roughly. Now we'll dial that in as interest rates where they go, but that's about 2 million bucks. So we look at that.
So this project, though, to us is a lot of money, is still less than when we actually built and the original and have all these other bond payments that are going to be coming off in a couple of years.
Yes, although I can't speak to the details of it.
Right, but I'm just.
Yeah.
I. Yeah, because I mean, if our bond payments are, you know, if our debt service is what 340,000. And now if we do, if we get the 7 million and then we bond for two to 3 million.
So that's where the.
Approximately, right?
This is where the picture of the wastewater treatment facility project funding comes into play.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing is you guys just paid for the whole thing without grants. So.
Yeah, I have no idea.
The whole project, if you say it's 10 million, that's kind of in the center between the ranges there. Say it's $10 million piece of grant covers seven if we get the whole boat. New debt service of 2 million, reserves of 1.5 million. That leaves you about 500 left over when you take that whole thing into account. And so that's what I predicated, especially, you know, especially the sewer end of the utility rate study, try to aim this. So obviously, if this goes to there for a year, we're going to be a little short.
Well, let's just hope it doesn't.
Yes, so let's hope we get grant funding because that's a big part of this picture to make sure we can move forward with improvements. So thi- this is your source and use statement as far as how that project plays out on a very 30,000 foot scale. So what we do when we look at the utility rates is we pull together revenues and expenditures. And these are much more condensed versions of the budget you see. We don't have to go into great detail because we look at the detail, we look at the detail as we do the budget. So the main categories for revenue is property taxes, utility fees, and the other, which is just everything else. Utility fees we separate out because that's what we're trying to control in this with the utility rate study. So we pull those figures out and this represents if rates did not change. So if we left utility fees the same and they did not change. But on the expenditures, we have operations, debt service and capital improvements are the three main categories to look at. So for this, I add a 3% inflationary factor for these future years, just to get an idea. Debt service, these are the figures that get plugged in on the water side, so what that looks like. So that gives us our totals for both on each side. And then the difference is what is our revenues over expenditures based upon that? You repeat the same process with the sewer end of things. So again, revenues, expenditures, same categories, what does that look like? Again, I'm here, you can see the big shift in the debt service and the placeholder number that we have allocated in here. And what does that look like if you didn't change rates at all? Big dip because we're backing off general fund for 2024 by 100 grand. So you're seeing, that's where you're seeing the dip and that's the same number you saw in the budget. What that looks for 2025 if we change nothing, but then it starts to go downhill and hit negative numbers if we make no adjustments. So the question becomes, okay, well, if we, what should we be looking for as far as rates? So the rule of thumb I've always been told is you want your revenues to be 105 to 110% above your expenditures. What that means is if you have $100 in expenditures, you want your revenues to be 105 or $110 coming in. So on the top with the water here, we have our, you have, and it's comprised of two areas, base charge and use. And use gets stratified out like this. And our rates here. Excuse me. So rate charge, this is the, this is the line item we play with. So this is, since this is our document, typically what you see is you pay for a utility rate study. It's three to five years worth of data and you just live by that because rate studies are expensive and you don't want to update them every year because they are expensive to do so. So you kind of say, this is our set in stone thing, but with something in the house, we get to look at this every year and update it as it makes sense and, and it's necessary. So it helps give us some predictive on it, but we can really dial it in each year as we come around the budget season to make sure we're at where we need to be. Does it need to be 2% or can it be 1.5 or maybe none at all because things are going better than we thought? Type of arrangement. So what this does is we play with this number here to see what the difference is. So 102 you read as 2% increase. 101.5 is 1.5 or 100 is just a 0% increase. That then translates into the revenue generated column here. And then also a 2% affects these numbers here. So all these numbers, if we were to do 110, updates all those figures and multiplies them out. So we can adjust this to see where it lands and play with it, do all that fun stuff. So this represents the total revenue. This is our surplus generated. So this is your revenues over expenditures based upon what you do here. This is just a placeholder that says, what is your 10% goal? If you were to do 10% of that, you know, if you want to be closer to five, if you want to be 10, becomes that question. And then this is our actual surplus percentage. So based upon what you put in here, where does that actually hit and that whole thing?
So just so I understand.
Yes.
Why, if we left everything the same, let's say we, and we weren't going to change in 2027, the reason why the base rate, everything would go down is because all our debt has now been paid.
Right.
And there's no more debt service.
Right.
So.
Represents this, that chunk disappearing.
That would give a huge savings. Have you ever seen a city like that's a big change?
Sure is.
Which is awesome. But is that what you do? Because we know that we don't have a lot of future, because what we always didn't want to do was this big yo-yo.
Right, right.
Like up and down, up and down, but.
So, yeah, I've talked with Kyle extensively about, because I saw this too when I started putting this together. I'm going, holy cow, that's a drop. So in talking with Kyle, I say, is there anything in there that we need to keep an eye on that we're going to bond for? And what he comes back and says is we can handle it with the reserves. We keep putting money away at that 5 to 10%. We keep putting money away, we should be fine. We don't have major stuff. The 2020 project took care of a lot of it.
Which is what's so great about the tool. In two years, that 2028 does bump up some.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, I know that, like, once we get there, it could be like, wow, okay. We have a different look at things.
Yep.
Our projections.
I mean, that's exciting to see that we could possibly lower rates.
Yeah, you could, you could get into 2025 and things, but 2026 and maybe something's creeping on the horizon that we're not seeing in 2023. So maybe this isn't quite coming down.
That dramatic.
That dramatic.
But we could be like, we could go down.
Yeah.
Because we might see a slight uptick in sewer with the project. And you, even though there are two separate entities, you could kind of
Play.
You have, you have to pay for both.
Right. You treat them separate, but on the consumer end of thing, on the citizen end of things. They're paying a utility bill.
Right.
They're not necessarily carrying like.
Looking at the difference.
This is water, this is sewer, this is storm. It's like, I paid.
Well, it's just like your property taxes where people don't realize it's city, county, state.
Yep.
Not state, but.
So it's being mindful of the individual plus the total package.
Yeah, okay.
For me, I'm perfect with that surplus percent of 75 right in the middle for this first year. Get a couple of years, see how it goes, see what we're doing and adjust as appropriate. I think it makes sense to go right in the middle.
And we don't even have to raise rates. The next possible rate raise is 2025 and we might say we don't even need to do that.
Yeah, depending on where you want to land.
Down into 2027, not have much of, why go up to bring it down in two years?
Right.
Maybe we just level it.
Or do 1%. Instead of two.
To this point where we're potentially in 2027, dropping our rates. We're saving a seven and a half to 9.1% surplus and we're not using property taxes is huge.
The idea is you put.
Bright outlook.
You want to keep putting money into your reserve balances because a day will come where a project needs to happen. So that then helps write down similar to wastewater treatment facility, we're looking at a million and a half out of reserves.
We could have more homes, we could have some more revenue that covers so that back, so when we relook at it every year, which I love being able to do. You know, we don't.
What happened, what does that mean? And.
Yeah.
How does that impact the future outlook? So you're dialing this in every single year to make sure you're.
Especially with everything going up in cost, I'm very excited to see that 2024, we're, we don't, even in both of them, we don't need to raise.
Mm hmm. So I think you're, you're sitting in there, so you don't need to bump it up. It just isn't necessary. So you do the exact same process on the sewer end. Again, explained, we're having placeholder numbers in there for the debt service. We'll see how everything does shake out, but with this influx, you just kind of prepare as best you can. And as much as it would have been to, you know, if the facilities had been fantastic for another 20 years and we didn't have to do a project. Yeah, sewer rates would be dropping significantly. But given that we have the debt service coming back on, we're trying to just ride that incremental increase. Like I said, we have looking at here, I plugged in two, two and two and a half to make sure we're riding that in there. We know sewer rates, well, when we look at the comparison side, our sewer rates a little bit on the higher side. So we're just trying to ride that and do what makes sense. It's weird for government to say that, but try to do what makes sense. So again, we could play with these numbers if they're like, well, this looks good. We're looking at 0% next year and 0% on that. 0% here anticipating what's coming in 25 and then adjusting here as well.
And we, we, in our previous rate studies, I think we ended up raising one time. And then we ended up not having to raise because things actually panned out better than we had anticipated based on unique situations each year.
Mm hmm.
Right, no, I know we had one.
Yeah, we had one and then we, and then we really didn't make changes after that because we were still healthy.
And I think for me, just looking into the future of this with 2027 coming up, I'd like to just try to do everything we can just to hold it into 2027 and then bring it down. Now, not as significant because we have a couple of years to make up, but I'd rather not see them bump up just knowing everything.
I, I would like to look at them as a whole, the water and the sewer as a whole for the consumer and make sure that we're not in, you know, the jump is, that that makes sense.
Oh, this is, this is great.
So it looks like the answer is steady for the next.
At least two.
Couple of, two, three years. And then we get back into, so looking at that, so planning on zeros for next year. Then I pulled together data from surrounding communities. I tried to go in a various geographic radius around us. So I pulled 20 cities, got their utility rate information. And what you do to kind of apples to apples, because base rates and usage rates vary in philosophies on how you want to implement those. So what you do is say, well, if you use 5,000 gallons a month, which is average, and then you come up with a total bill based upon those base rates and usage rates. So pulled a bunch of that information, threw it together. And so on the water bill end of things, assuming 5,000 gallons for the 20 cities in that area, that's about where we fall for a utility bill.
It's still hard because each city has a different.
They're at different stages.
And a different stage. But unfortunately, as a consumer, you are comparing like cities.
Yeah. So it both matters and does not in different ways.
Right.
So, but it's still good to look at. It's a good visual.
It is a very good visual and it also is a good speaking point. But, you know, I didn't understand the difference between things but before getting, coming and sitting at these meetings and, and being on the council, I was naive to how thing, I didn't know that water and sewer treatment plants were different.
Mm hmm. So that's about where we sit of the 20 cities. And then I pulled out Carver County only, another visual talking point compared to our Carver County fellow cities. Where do we land in there? For the water bills. Similarly, did the same thing for on the sewer end of things. And this is for current and then I'll show quick on future. A little on the higher side, and I think everybody just kind of knew we were on the higher side of things. No shock for Carver County on the highest side just because of the improvements that were made 20 years ago and the growth that just didn't quite happen. Storm sewer, though, seemed to be doing pretty well and it's amazing the range on storm sewer. I thought, pulling that together, I thought this would be a tighter group than it actually was, but you got some that go way up over 20. And then mound theirs is, so this is based on residential. A lot of this is based on residential. It's not commercial since mayor is primarily residential. That's where I apples to apples it to be concise with the data. So this is residential where mound, it's a dollar a month. And on the Carver County end of things for storm sewer.
This is great.
And then just an idea, I mean, then if you do, if you do the utility rate adjustments over the next handful of years that were presented, not that they're final, but where does mayor fall on those years? So here's 26, 25, 23, 24, and then 27 for water bills where that lands. Now, all these city, other cities stay the same. They will fluctuate over the next five years as well. Gives an idea, same thing, Carver County. Sewer bills.
We also have a Class A.
Yeah, we also have a Class A facility. And I didn't do storm because not proposing any changes for storm sewer. It's kind of as is right now. So that is the first look at the utility rate study. So if you guys think of anything, text me, let me know, shoot me an email, say, hey, we should think about this. We start making adjustments for all that. Thank you, guys. That should be all.